to City Hall and to our council chambers. This morning, our invocation will be given by Pastor Kevin Jennings with Mount Olive Lutheran Church. Pastor?
Good morning. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, we pray for all who are in authority. Give us the grace with all our fellow citizens to value the officers, the magistrates of our government, and this, the City Council of Corpus Christi as those sent by you. Instill in us the respect and honor that is due them. Lord, we pray endowed them with wisdom for their several duties, with a spirit of sacrifice for the common welfare, and with mercy and justice, with uprightness and kindliness. Hear us for the sake of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag will be led by Eliana Jade Arias. She is a 12th grader at Tulsa Midway High School and class president since the 7th grade.
Go Oregon!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Eliana, and good luck in your studies. City Secretary Rebecca, what would you please cuple?
Mayor Palat Wahado, council members Roland Barera, Sylvia Campos, Gil Hernandez, Michael Hunter, Jim Klein, Mike Pusley, Everett Roy, Dan Suckley, City Manager Peter Zanoni, City Attorney Miles Rizley, Mayor and Council, La Coram of the Council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Warta. We'll move on to Section E, and that is the managers, the city managers' comments and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council and the community. We do have several items on the city manager's report this morning, and I'll be presenting some as well as other individuals. But we do want to begin with a, an update here on public safety. And you may have seen in the news, you may have seen in the news last Friday, a Dallas police officer, Burks, was sitting in his patrol vehicle in between calls when an individual walked over his vehicle and began a conversation with him. That same individual then pulled a gun out and killed Officer Burks. And that was early in the morning, so that made our national news. And when two backup police officers arrived to check on Burks, the suspect also shot them as well. Those two officers have survived and are recovering. The suspect was pursued by Dallas police officers, and eventually he was killed. But I bring it up today because the incident reminds us about the toughness of all public safety departments, both police and fire, and including our own right here in Corpus Christi, Texas. And so, we, we remember this year CCPD, our Corpus Christi Police Department, lost two police officers. Both our officers, Kyle Hicks and Vicente Ortiz, will be receiving the Star of Texas Award on September 11th, the September 11th in Austin. The award is given to officers killed or seriously injured in the line of duty. So as we conclude our final steps in the budget development process for this fiscal year coming up, FY25, we are reminded that we need to continue to invest in public safety positions and training for our police and firefighters, and making sure they have the supplies and equipment to do their job, and funding facilities in which they train in and from which they just, they respond from. And importantly, to continue to foster strong working relationships and building trust in our community. So finally, as a reminder on this note, 9/11 is just nine days away. It'll be next week, nine days away. This will be another opportunity for us to give tribute to all our men and women and their families who serve and have served, both in our Corpus Christi Police and Fire Departments. So Mayor, that's that item. I don't know if there's any comments on the mayor and council? Okay?
Thank you. No, no comments. Thank you for bringing it to light. And as always, it's always, it's a very sad event, but it is a stark reminder of what our police and firefighters, that the dangers that they face, whether it's something like this, a traffic stop, or a fire, or, you know, the 9/11 event. So it's, it's, thank you for bringing it to, to our attention as we continue to invest and keep public safety a priority.
Right. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, our next item is a road project. It's a very important one, though. It's up in the Cal Allen area. And last, last week, Councilman Pusley and Councilman Roy and myself and several staff members were in attendance for a TechDOT public hearing. And so, we want to talk to you about this project. It's a $35 million road project, and TechDOT is the agency that's funding it through the MPO and is in charge of the project. It is the Northwest Boulevard, and it's from Wildcat Drive to County Road 73. And today with us, I think, is Ernest here. May have been an issue with the bridge, but, okay. So, one of our persons, maybe shortly, our TechDOT's area engineer, Ernest Longoria, and TechDOT consultant Fernando Camerillo, oh, here they are, will come up to the microphone. So, this road project, as they approach, is a three-mile section of roadway. It will include new safety improvements such as widening the existing roadway to include three travel lanes in each direction. It will add protected left-turn lanes, crosswalks, pedestrian signals, and shared youth, use paths. Today, much of this section has no sidewalks at all, no use paths. So, the goal of the project is to promote safe pathways for pedestrians, vehicular traffic, and bicyclists. And as I just told, our TechDOT representatives in our community, we fund infrastructure through local tax dollars. But often, the state or even the federal government is also investing in our community. And this project is significant, a $35 million investment in Cal Allen. And we want to highlight it. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Ernie at this point, who will introduce our speakers this morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Ernie Delgarza, Director of Public Works. As Mr. Zanoni mentioned, with us today, Ernest Longoria, area engineer for Texas Department of Transportation, and Fernando Camarillo with Pazneki Camarillo LLC. And Mr. Camarillo will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Ernie. Again, yeah, my name's Fernando Camarillo with Pazneki Camarillo. I'm the consultant for TechDOT, overseeing and project manager for this FM 624 project for TechDOT, and here within the city of Corpus Christi. City Manager kind of went over some of the details of this. I'll go into some of the more specifics. But the project is FM 624 Northwest Boulevard from Wildcat to County Road 73. The project adds to add safety and mobility improvements. This is going to be done within, with no additional right-of-way required. And currently, UTP has a project cost of $35 million. The project goals identified are to improve safety for both pedestrians, cyclists, as well as vehicle traffic. It is to reduce the conflict points where crashes are most likely to happen, as well as improve how people travel through the project area. So, just to give you a quick overview of the timeline, we did start and begin this project back in 2023, last year, doing the schematic design for this. We are, we had a open house in November of 2023, and then last week, we had a public hearing. We do anticipate getting environmental clearance later this year, and we are beginning also the final design details of this project. And then anticipate construction to begin as early as late of 2025. So here's the typical section of what the roadway looked like, very similar to what you see from 77 to Wildcat, a six-lane section with, with turn lanes and a raised median. This whole section will continue all the way to County Road 73. We will widen the road to include those three lanes in each direction and provide a shared use path on one side, which is a 10-foot-wide, extra-wide sidewalk with buffer areas, not only between the travelway, but also a shoulder area, so that pedestrians as well as cyclists can share that, share that path. On the other side, we will provide a extra-wide sidewalk. Typically, you have a six-foot sidewalk that is up against the curb. We'll actually provide a buffer between the curb and where the sidewalk is at. And we're trying to get an eight-foot sidewalk, eight-foot sidewalk going through on that side. We will add additional traffic signals at the intersections. We'll also be adding raised median throughout the corridor, and then installing an underground storm sewer system to help address some of the drainage concerns that are out there. So, just to highlight some of the safety components that we're adding to this, we're doing a lot of work in the intersections to upgrade them. They will be protected left turns. Today, you have what's called a permissive left turn, which is buffer between the sidewalks and the shared use path. So when we look at the raised medians, you know, here's an example of an existing condition and proposed design. We're looking at eliminating those opposing left turns where there currently exist out there. Those create sight distance issues for vehicles that are wanting to turn left. We will create longer left turn medians so that traffic can queue up. And also, what we'll look at, when we look at these raised medians, is we start identifying areas where we eliminate traffic trying to turn into driveways directly, and we concentrate those turns at the intersections where they'll be signalized and be, be able to make a safer movement. And with the three lanes, they'll be able to make a turnaround to go back to the, to the destination they're trying to go to. So these raised medians do provide, you know, they eliminate some of the conflict points that create crashes. We did have a public meeting or a public hearing last week. The comment period is still open till September 16th. This QR code will get you to the comment forums. They'll get you some more information, more detail. There is a recorded presentation on that, that you can go to and get some more specifics of the, of the project, as well as some of the exhibits that we had at the meeting. You can email comments, you can mail in comments, you can call them in, or you can go online and place any comments. So definitely feedback, whether it be positive or negative, we'll accept both. But you always end up hearing the negative, and that sometimes makes it not justify a project that is well-deserved and needed for improving safety. So with that, questions?
Councilman Pusley?
Thank you very much. Great project, and something that's been long overdue for our area in the northwest. A couple of things that came up, I was at the meeting the other night, and there was a lot of comment, or at least some comment about, you know, the plans to eliminate some of those turn across, especially there close to the I-69 intersection with 624. But I tried to tell, we're gonna send somebody out there and tell them they can't do that while we're having a meeting. I, I tried to explain that the number of accidents that have occurred there have just been overwhelming. And, and so I think for safety reasons, we're, people will learn to, to live with it. Peter, I know we talked a little bit about, and Peter, thank you for being there as well, that TechDOT is only allowed to do a certain amount of the existing lighting. And I think that, that whole corridor could use more lighting. And if there's a way we could, the city could join with TechDOT and maybe add some additional lighting along that, that would be great.
Right. That's for nighttime lighting, so street lighting, not traffic signal lighting, but street lighting.
Street lighting, yeah.
We saw our councilman on the maps, and we heard some residents speak as well. So as TechDOT said, they can only replace what's there. So the city would, we would do a, in a local agreement, where we would help fund the, the additional lights, and then we would probably share in the cost of the cost of the, you know, the, the bill, the electric bill.
Yeah.
But it's definitely needed, because you'll have a beautiful improvement in the daytime, but at night, it'll still be too dark. So.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Especially along there where Wildcat Stadium's at, when, after a football game.
Right.
It's a busy, busy place, people getting in and out. So, but anyway, this is a great project. Thank, thank you very much to TechDOT for pushing this forward. I heard a lot of positive comments there the other night, so I think people are very excited about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Councilman. I think that, as mentioned, and you've been, along with Councilman Roy, a big advocate of the improvements needed along the corridor and in the, in the, in the area. So thank you very much for the presentation. Let's see, Councilman Roy?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. I, I think it was, it was a well-delivered event. I, I have a question really for City Manager. As far as the streetlights, especially on the street that parallels, the one that we're going to try to redirect traffic to?
Right.
Can we start working on those streetlights now, as soon as possible, you know, so that they're up and they're there? Because that, that street's extremely dark.
Yeah, the ones where people may use alternate routes around.
Right.
Yes.
As constructions.
Okay.
Through, which is our.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll have our, we have a utility person in our finance department, so we'll have her begin to do that work. Yes, sir?
All right. Thank you. And thank you, thanks again for your presentation.
Councilman Hunter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say that we appreciate this. TechDOT usually doesn't get enough love outside of one project that we've been working on for a while. Y'all have done some great things on a lot of other projects. And Corpus hasn't seen this attention in a long time from TechDOT. So we appreciate it. And not just thank y'all, but also thank you to our state delegation.
Thank you, Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say it's good to see both sidewalks and then walking paths incorporated into this as well. Thank you so much for doing that. Appreciate this.
Thank you. That concludes questions and comments.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you guys for being there. Thank you. Okay, Mayor, this next item we should be able to get done. But it's a highlight of our bond program and our sales tax reauthorizations. And I'm doing it today because we'll be releasing our educational brochures. These are them here. We'll pass them out here in a moment. But this is the one in the bond program. And then we have a companion one for the sales tax reauthorization. These are educational materials. And we're going to go through this presentation just to remind the viewers about what's, what will be on the ballot this November. So there are four propositions in our bond program. If we can go to the next slide, is there a clicker over here? So our Proposition A, this is how it will appear on the ballot, is Proposition A. That's 89.5 million for streets for 18 projects. Note that the first project up there, citywide, includes 35 million for residential streets. That was a, an item that the City Council added. So we'll have 35 million to begin residential streets later this fall, if this is approved. You can see this construction and design under our new policy of doing design in one bond program and then construction in the next. You can especially see that in City Council District 5, where we're designing a lot of the roadwork with construction to be put into a subsequent bond. So on our next slide is our Parks and Recreation, 37.6 million for 11 projects. A lot of good projects on here, citywide, including a second aquatic center in our northwest area at TC Ayers Park. Also, additional improvements at the Greenwood Ball, Baseball Complex, and, and work at Billwitt Park, which is one of our signature parks. And then in public safety, $45 million. And this would, this will construct two replacement fire stations. It will also construct two new police substations, and then it will have design for one, one additional fire station and one additional police substation. So six projects in total for police and fire for critical public safety infrastructure in our community. And then finally, Proposition D is cultural facilities. And this does include, as we've talked about in our budget process, $2 million for the design of a replacement Garcia Library and Community Center slash Senior Center. It will be to replace the current library and then add in that area of town where there are no senior centers, a new senior center. And it'll also be used as a community center for youth. Okay, so under the sales tax authorization, just to remind everybody what the council ultimately voted on, we do have Proposition E, which will be the repurposing of one of the 1/8 cents, and half of it will be used for streets, for arterial and collector. And over the 20-year term, this, this proposition does have a 20-year term. It's estimated about 100 million would be collected for the purposes of street reconstruction. So that's pretty tremendous when you think about it. And these streets listed on this slide are the, the priority projects that would be done first. Initially, they were in the bond program, but we moved them to this authorization so that we could do $35 million in residential streets in the bond program. But once these projects are done, then additional projects will be done over the years, working with the Type B Board and the City Council. So the priority projects you can see here include Yorktown, Alameda, Sam Rankin, and then Lower Broadway as well. So the companion here for, on the next slide, Purpose 2, under Proposition E, is the other half of the 1/8 cent would be used for the American Bank Center and other community facilities in the C District. And it will be to replace critical operations equipment, do structural repairs, safety enhancements, and some drainage improvements. And on this next slide here, oh, we'll keep it, go back one, I'm sorry. Here, it does include not only the American Bank Center in total, so the arena, the convention center, and the Selena Auditorium, but it also focuses on five assets in what we call the C District. That does include the three mute. That does include the three museums that are behind the American Bank Center and the Harbor Playhouse and then the Water Garden as well. So annually, working with the Type B Board and city council, projects will be identified and funded over that 20-year period. The total estimate for the 20-year term is $100 million. Okay, so that's Proposition E. And then the final proposition, Proposition F, is the entire 1/8 cent would be for one purpose, and that would be for the downtown seawall and then citywide flood control and drainage projects. And that would, that estimate of revenue to be collected over the 20-year term is $200 million to make sure our downtown seawall remains stable, to include things like the breakwater, some of the landmass bulketing, make sure that whole flood structure remains, remains intact and protects the downtown area. And then there's a total of seven projects that we identified from our own drainage and flood control master plan, and they are pretty much citywide. And so these are priority candidate projects that will be decided and worked on most likely first with the Type B Board and city council input. So this last slide is a nice one, I like it. We put it together last week and we're going to show more of this in the community because what this shows is a combination of both the bond program and the sales tax reauthorization. There's several takeaways. For me, the biggest one is that this is a $575 million investment in city infrastructure only. It's all city infrastructure. So that includes streets, it includes flood control, it includes buildings we own that the taxpayers paid for and we're keeping them in good shape and maintaining them. And it does include parks. And so when you look across the top, streets, or the bottom actually, if you look at the total for streets, both propositions, all propositions listed would be an investment of almost $200 million in streets when you consider the bond program of 89.5 and the sales tax reauthorization of $100 million. So 189.5 million for streets and flood control, $200 million. So that's more than half of this total amount is for two basic infrastructure issues in our city, streets and flood control. And then when you look at facilities, $162 million. These are for critical facilities that we own, that we need to invest in to keep them maintained, to protect taxpayer investment, and make them a nice destination for our citizens and visitors to go to. So that does include some park facilities, public safety, $45 million. We mentioned those earlier. And then facilities under Proposition E, $100 million for the American Bank Center complex and then the five assets behind it. And then finally, Proposition B has a little bit of money for parks outside of the facilities, so that includes things like trails and outdoor, outdoor park, and many of these for $23 million. So that's a good way of looking at it, total of $575 million in city assets, city infrastructure, half of which is for streets and flood control alone, and then the, another $162 million for facilities that we own. So the final thing here is, we are on our education now mode here at the city, so we have a number of staff members who are doing presentations, educational presentations across our city. This list here just shows some of the ones that are on our calendars now. This is not an exhaustive list. And so whoever wants us to come and speak with them, we're engaging the community, the council members. We'll be going to neighborhood meetings, we'll be going to homeowners association meetings, several of these association and stakeholder groups to present the facts over the next several weeks. Our website is updated with all this material. And today, we'll be releasing to the city council and the community the bond brochure, which is an educational brochure in Spanish and English. And then the sales tax one, right now it's stamped draft, so our bond, bond council is doing a final review over the weekend. And this one will be in final form most likely by tomorrow or the next day. But we're going to hand out a draft copy now so you can kind of see it today.
And Peter, where can the public pick one?
Right, great, so what?
Or either one?
Right, so these, these brochures will be on our website, but we are going to distribute them en masse across the city.
Okay.
At places like our senior centers, our libraries, our gyms and park facilities, League of Women Voters, the council, you're welcome to have as many as you want to distribute them when you go to your community meetings. We'll take them with us when we go speak to the community. Like last week, we're at North Beach Community Association. The next time we go there before the election, we'll take these with us and hand them out. It's real good factual information with the project, the project scope, the budget, maps, and more information on the election itself. Okay, so that concludes this item, mayor. We'll see if there's any questions from the council.
Great, I don't think we have any. This is a great presentation. Thank you very much, and we look forward to those, or receiving, you know, some of those pamphlets.
Right.
Great, well, it's 12 noon, so you're right on, right on target, Peter. We're going to go ahead and start our public comment. Thank you. So we're proceeding to Item F, which is public comment. And I'd like to take a moment to emphasize the importance of this business meeting. We handle significant matters concerning taxpayer dollars, making it imperative that we uphold the highest standards of decorum and adherence to our policies. Our core principles of openness, transparency, and inclusiveness guide our actions, and we aim to achieve them while respecting our council policy, which has been in place for 30 years. Public comment serves as one avenue for communication, but it's certainly not the sole method. You can also reach out to your council members by way of phone call, emails, or even an in-person appointment. With that said, let's go ahead and proceed to public comment, keeping in mind the importance of decorum and adherence to this policy. Before we begin, I would like to ask our city attorney, Miles Rusley, to review the rules of decorum.
All citizens must be courteous, polite, and respectful of one another, including the city council and city staff. The mayor and council members shall be referred to by title and/or title surname. All remarks must be addressed to the mayor and council, city council, and not to the council members as individuals. Citizens are only permitted to speak on city-related subject matter. Speaking on any non-city-related matter is prohibited. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed. Citizens must refrain from any disturbing noise, demonstration, or other act disrupting to the city council business.
Thank you, Miles. So individuals will be called upon in order that they signed up electronically. We will first hear in-person comments, followed by virtual public comments. Residents of Corpus Christi will be given priority over non-residents. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. You have two opportunities to make public comment on an agenda item and city or city-related business. First is at this time, and second, when the item is actually heard. So please select one option. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, while non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And a visible timer positioned near the city secretary's desk will assist in managing the allotted time. Upon completion of the allotted time, a buzzer will signal the conclusion of your comments. If you have a petition or relevant information, please present it to the city secretary. She will hand it to us before speaking. So with that, we will start with Mr. Sean Flanagan.
Sean Flanagan, 4218 Herndon Street. First, I'd like to say God bless you all for all your services. You got a hard job and you do, you work at it. I am talking, speaking today on the issue of our petition to increase the informed consent concerning COVID-19 vaccinations. We had a meeting last Wednesday with city staff and city health department. As a result of that meeting, we agreed to pull it, or request it to be not put on the agenda for this week because we made some real progress in that meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for Thursday at 4 o'clock today, or that day, in which case we are going to be dealing with legality of the petition that we're hoping to go forward on. With that in mind, on, that meeting occurred Wednesday, Thursday, a letter from Dr. Allison Chavez-Larkin, from, who's the leader of the Noises County Medical Society, was given to all the city council members. Letter contained some legal opinions. We ran them by the Citizens Defending Freedom legal folks that we had used previously in going forward with this, and to say that the arguments presented in that article or in that letter were inadequate in their opinion is an understatement. So basically, we're looking forward to the meeting Thursday to hopefully resolve any legal issues going forward. In addition to that, during our meeting, some questions were raised about some data that we had presented you. And I'd given it to you the last time I spoke, it was a listing of about 30 side effects that were listed in this analysis of CDC data from their vaccine adverse effect reporting system. And it was done by a PRR analysis. PRR analysis, basically a comparison of the side effects reported for this disease to the side effects reported to this disease. And is there a difference? If it's greater than one, there's a difference. If it's over two, you're getting twice as many side effects from that vaccine versus this vaccine. Some of the side effects listed were as many as 10. Now, the other thing that's interesting in this analysis, the analysis was a comparison of the data from 1990 to June of 2024 of all vaccines given for any disease. That's on one side. On the other side was four years of reported adverse reactions for COVID-19 vaccinations. And you can see, you're getting side effects that are 10 times greater, five times greater, six times greater, from 34 uses of vaccinations for the totality of diseases to the disease of COVID-19 and the adverse side effects. That's the reason we're excited about this, that we think that what we have now currently is inadequate. But we're working diligently with city staff and health department to hopefully resolve these issues because we strongly feel that the science in this issue needs to be reflected in what the citizens of Corpus Christi are given. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
John Weber, 6009 Naples Street. I would like to give all the city employees a big shout out for keeping our city running. Some of these people we see in the public, but many of them work tirelessly behind the scenes. It appears the, that other public commenters and myself are wasting our time. Saying that, a council member asked staff an excellent question last week that the staff could not or would not answer. That was, how much money would the city get if the city council chose the IDA annex option? At the very least, this vote should be postponed until that question is answered. Regarding fairness, the city is asking IDAs to pay 74.5% on improvements, while city residents must pay property tax on 100% of their property improvements. Why are IDAs not taxed at 100%? A 19% increase in payment in lieu of taxes over 15 years is what is proposed. This is just over 1% a year for 15 years. Let's compare that to residential property taxes. Our properties are appraised every year. Even including a 10% cap on homesteaded properties, residential property taxes could increase at that rate for the next 15 years. 10% times 15 years equals 150%. If you add compounding, you get 318%. Compare that to 19%. Between 2009 and 2023, which is 15 years, the median home price in Corpus Christi metro area went up from $138,704 to $285,000. This is a 105% increase. Compare this to 19%. I could only dream of my property taxes being raised by 19% in total for the next 15 years. This doesn't even include the millions of dollars in lost sales tax and franchise fees on electricity sold. The city staff projected the 19% increase in pilot payments to raise revenues by 120 million in 15 years. This amount would be negative in real terms if you count for inflation. Typical inflation is 3% a year, which compounded would be 56% over 15 years. We all know taxes must be fair. Who thinks this is fair? Raise your hand, please. As always, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Good morning, council. Samuel Andre Fryer, I live in District Four. I just want to say I'm not going to be necessarily as nice as Sean was because I've stood here before the council for the last couple of years, talking about the danger of these shots and also talking about how there are actual remedies and treatment that successfully treats the shots. We actually talked with the public health district, and it was in July timeframe, we talked with them. And then Councilman Gil Hernandez actually gave two weeks for them to give information for the legality, which they claimed it was illegal. Unfortunately, all the way up until the mid-August timeframe, even though we had submitted a petition on the 2nd of July, they still hadn't provided any information that says something was illegal. And so that is a concern. But nevertheless, even though they were given two weeks, they immediately, the following week after we had met, it went before the council and it made it appear that we didn't care because no one was here, because we didn't even know about it being on the agenda. The other thing is, we met a few weeks ago, and during that particular meeting, it's always been pushback. Pushback as far as whether or not we're going to do it, if we can do it or not, always pushback, it's always been pushback, but based on what they, what are regulations and the vaccine information statement, that is not law. So that is another concern we have. So the question is here, I was remember, when I was commander, a general officer said, always question the assumptions of your staff and your hire. That stuck with me and it stayed with me for over 25 years. And the question being is, why are we not questioning the assumptions of the staff? They are complete assumptions, and it is very dangerous. This shot itself is extremely, extremely dangerous. Unfortunately, the staff has a tendency to parrot after the CDC and the FDA. None of these individuals treat patients. We have many doctors, a multitude of doctors, some have been fired because they treat patients based on the actual evidence and what they have seen. They treat patients successfully for this disease. Nevertheless, they push a shot that is very dangerous. During our last meeting, the question was, they said, oh, well, we haven't given any shots lately because of the new vaccine that's come out. I don't like to call it a vaccine because it's not. But nevertheless, I asked the question, well, how many, does this particular one actually prevent someone from COVID-19? The answer is absolutely not, just like none of the other ones have. People get, continue to get multiple boosters, continue to get the shot, continue to get the shots, and they continue over and over again to get actual COVID. So I'm here to stand as a voice for those, the woman who has a complete hysterectomy because she took a shot and wasn't told of the danger of the shot, and everyone else has been harmed by these shots. And I hope for once you all listen and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
Good afternoon, Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock. Good afternoon, elected community members and taxpayer-funded employees. Thank you for making it easier for candidates that are running against you all by putting things on the agenda today, like, I don't know, increasing small business fees, building permits, certificates of occupancy, food health permits, vendor permits, food handler certificates. There's a trend here that has been going on for five years. I believe that the community that I talk to is tired of the money grab. You have $757 million for a D-SAL plant that the community cannot afford and does not want to pay for. You have now a $1.8 million budget that we've had zero population growth for, a little over 1% in five years. But the budget has gone from $900 million, 980 some odd million, to now $1.8 billion, and the community is not seeing it within our neighborhoods. You have IDAs that Mr. Weber has just clarified as another decision made in favor of industry. You guys keep using that $120 million number, divided by 15 years is only $8 million. That's only an additional $8 million from these companies that are making multi-billion dollars a year, and we're only increasing their tax debt to $8 million a year. We have a We have a corrupt sitting council members that would like their attorney's fees to be paid for whenever they are questioned on their ethical behavior. We need to get to a point where we have elected representatives that are on the side of the community, that is going to save the taxpayers' money and make decisions in our favor as opposed to being against us. We get preached to about economic development, and here we are, three different items going after the small, locally-owned business owners and increasing all the fees that they would need to, I don't know, develop our community. We cannot understand what you guys are doing behind this dais. We do not understand. I'd like to continue to ask for the resignation of our city manager because he not only continues to reach into the pockets of taxpayers, but nothing is getting accomplished in favor of the community. And I advise the community to vote no on the proposed sales tax increases, no to the bond, and no to any other money grab attempt.
Thank you, Ms. Caballero. Mark Minster.
Mark Minster, 101 through Barracuda. Yeah, I came today to speak against the industrial tax payments again as well. I really think that probably most average residents and people probably don't have a lot of information or know exactly how that works, what the annual, you know, what's coming into the city, what we could be getting from these billion-dollar companies that aren't residents, that are just working regular salary jobs, that are companies making huge amounts of money all around the world. But yeah, and also, these decisions are being made like on a Tuesday. I'm not surprised that there's not more people here speaking against it because everyone's probably at work, it's the day after Labor Day. I mean, I'm lucky that I'm able to be here. And yeah, these are the same companies that got PPP loans, more corporate handouts that all got forgiven, and then inflation's blamed on like a thousand-dollar stimulus checks, when these companies got millions of PPP loans that were just forgiven. And it's the same thing with desalination plant. Like, we've heard concerns about the far-field model. We saw emails from city officials talking about how the results may have not looked good. And we heard about that, like back in February, we had those presented to city council, and I still haven't heard anything from the city on those models. And we saw emails from city staff, the director of water, talking about the results were concerning. And we only saw the model from a public information request instead of it being presented to the council when we knew they had the information. And then at the same time, we're talking about paying attorney fees for, I mean, you probably wouldn't have needed a criminal attorney if there was no evidence. And I was at that ethics hearing, and they said there was a valid case, there was enough evidence for there to be a hearing. And I don't know if they were the ones that recommended that the city make this change to pay for legal fees. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minster. Mary Dale Peterson.
Good morning, mayor. Good morning, city council. My name is Mary Dale Peterson. I'm a resident of Corpus Christi in the Delmore neighborhood at 210 Naples Street. I'd like to support the city council and their budget requests for improving our city's infrastructure, specifically our water systems. And in particular, we've had some significant challenges with our water fluoridation systems over probably the past decade, I would say. So as, you know, a physician at Driscoll, having practiced over thirty years, I'm often asked, it must be really sad working in a children's hospital. I said, no, it's actually a wonderful, fun, joyful place. But what does really make me sad is when I see children that are in the hospital with illness, disease, or injury that's preventable. And early childhood caries is one of those diseases. Early childhood caries is a significant disease in childhood. It's the most common disease of childhood, more common than asthma. And we know how to prevent it, we just need to do a better job. Every day at Driscoll, we have one or two operating rooms going with children in the two to four age group with serious early childhood caries. A lot of people think baby teeth, they must not be important, they fall out anyway, right? Well, that's unfortunately not true. Not only do diseased teeth cause malnutrition and issues with very young children, but when they come out too early, you've lost the placeholders for your permanent teeth. So it affects the dentition for their entire lives. So how we prevent this is by appropriate fluoridation of our water. It's been proven time and time again. We had an unfortunate opportunity to study this back in around 2011 or 12. We retrospectively found out that the water department had turned off their fluoridation system because of challenges, but nobody really at a higher level knew about it. So we went back and looked at our data because we'd been really looking at some prevention campaigns on this and pediatric and dental offices. And on that graph that you see, this amounts to over half a million dollars a year spent in extra surgeries. That doesn't count parents' time off from work, or the, you know, children exposed to genital anesthesia and all those things because we didn't have fluoridation in our system. Already, right now, our fluoride is too low for what is recommended, and we're going to have to ask our pediatricians to start asking parents to get prescriptions for fluoride drops to supplement. So I just want to thank you all for making these investments in infrastructure that's been long overdue. I know it sounds like a lot of money to people, but when you look at the health consequences of not having an adequate water supply or water main breaks and contamination of our water supply, it really is a great investment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Victoria Holland.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Peter, I guess, are we currently fluoridating our water?
Yes, we are, councilman, but the system we have is, there's an item on this agenda to replace it with a more robust system. So the one we have today has a lot of manual.
Inter place.
Right. We have to intervene often because it's just a, it's kind of a put-together system that's not robust enough. So we've recognized this for a few years. The design is complete now, and so this is for the improvement of adding a whole brand-new system to fluoride the water.
Okay. Good, sorry. Thank you very much.
Ms. Holland.
Hi, I'm Victoria Holland, 235 Ohio Avenue. Thank you all so much for your time. I'm going to start by just briefly echoing the sentiments of Mr. Sean Flanagan. We've been honored and appreciated the time of city staff and the public health director to meet with us concerning broad community concerns over the COVID-19 mRNA treatments. We have been educating ourselves and learning more and more about our public health district's policies, and we look forward to answering their questions on any legal issue that comes up. We're blessed to have the support of a full and robust law firm that are able to look forward into those items for us because we absolutely want to make sure that our city is putting itself on its best footing in every regard. So thank you. Besides that, I'm actually here personally to advocate not just for an issue, but for me, myself. As most of y'all already know, I have applied to the Corpus Christi B Corporation and the Corpus Christi Jobs and Development Corporation, and I would very much appreciate your consideration for that post. You know, you're not going to find someone much more deeply invested into this community, its development, and our city. We live here, we're permanent residents, our children go to school here, we have no plans to move. This is an area that I want to see grow, I want to see develop, and I want to see it happen in such a way that it benefits us locals who live here. So I would really appreciate your consideration. I am someone who is up to speed and up to date with most of the development projects. If I'm not here in person, you better believe I'm watching online or catching up later. So I would just like to say thank you again for your time, thank you for city staff, city staff's time, and I hope to have your consideration in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Ernest Buck.
Mayor, councilpersons, I'm a pediatrician in our community, have lived here forty-four years. I live at 823 South Water Downtown. I want to comment and support Dr. Peterson's earlier talk about getting our water properly fluoridated and at the right amount. Having practiced here early in my career, when every baby had to have a prescription vitamin with fluoride that either Medicaid or the parents paid for, getting the water fluoridated at the proper level meant that didn't have to happen. And we're back at the point where now we're going to have to reteach everybody to go back and fluoridate unless the city does. And so if I'm asking you to not give us this hidden tax and this extra burden in our offices to have to retrain the parents and retrain ourselves to write proper fluoride amounts, we can do better than that. So I support the new equipment to make sure it gets done right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Miller.
Good morning, mayor and council. Michael Miller, 51 Camden Place. Just kind of wanted to go over a couple of things that I saw in the CIP. I've been carrying around this book with me for about a month now. I was alone descending vote on planning commission to the CIP, and I understand it's kind of difficult to, you know, vote no based on a couple of key projects, but there are a few things that I want to highlight for you. And, you know, I'd like to challenge staff to scrutinize a little bit more closely some of the projects within the proposed CIP. I've got about twenty things flagged in this book right here, but I've kind of condensed it to about eight that are easy to digest. First one, Newark Park Pavilion, page 104, it's four hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Just kind of flagged that because it's like four hundred and seventy dollars a square foot for basically a patio cover. We're going to pay two hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars on page 121 for the helicopter monument base at Cheryl Park for the design only. That seems extremely excessive for a concrete pedestal. City Hall exterior illumination, page 155, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And we're going to get certificate of obligation bonds for exterior colored lights on the building. The vehicle fleet wash on page 164, it's two hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars for design only. That equates to nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars of retail quick quack car washes for city vehicles. I can't imagine what that would equate to for the actual construction. The solid waste complex on page 189, fifty-one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to be paid with certificate of obligation bonds. This one was interesting, animal care kennels design, page 152. This is design only, mind you. One million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars to design some dog kennels. And I asked Camille Terrace about it during the planning commission meeting, and he said that that's actually an error, that they got bids, which I'm not, I don't think that you're supposed to be able to get bids for design services, but that it actually came in at one point eight million dollars to design the dog kennels. Underground gas storage, page 273, forty-nine million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I understand that that's in an effort to hedge natural gas prices to avoid things like ice storm Uri, but there's a lot less expensive ways, quite frankly, free ways to hedge gas by doing gas contracts, long-term gas contracts. And then finally, the Inner Harbor Desal Plant, page 337, two hundred and twenty-one million. I understand that we have to spend that money or we lose the SWIFT loan for that, but we don't have a permit yet, so that's kind of a pricey gamble at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Jason Hale.
Hi, councilmembers. Jason Hale, 211 Lemmy. Growing up, I would see "Don't Mess with Texas" signs all over the place, billboards, magazine ads, television commercials, you name it. To me, it meant that our natural resources are special and worth preserving. IDAs provide a unique opportunity to incentivize good stewardship of our natural resources because they deal with businesses that have essentially been given a license to pollute. Although these businesses produce goods that are important to the economy, they also consume resources and generate waste in a way that can have negative effects on our community. This is where IDAs can be really useful. I don't think we should be incentivizing industry growth flat out. Instead, the agreement could target growth in areas that align with the community's values, like cleaner air or more efficient water use. The current agreement gives a one hundred percent abatement to all spending on pollution control devices, whether it's the bare minimum or an upgrade. To me, that doesn't make sense. We should be giving abatements only to companies that use the best available technology, not the ones that do the bare minimum. Also, we could set the abatements to decrease as the region's air quality decreases. This could save us a lot of money because exceeding national air quality standards would put us into nonattainment, and that could cost the entire region over one point seven billion dollars a year. Staying in attainment would save us money, and it would ensure that our air is still okay to breathe. Unfortunately, suggestions like these were not able to be made during the city's negotiations with IDA businesses because there was no public input opportunity while they were taking place. Residents don't need access to sensitive financial information, we just need a seat at the table. Additionally, the costs and benefits of this agreement have not been clearly explained, specifically when it comes to looking at alternatives like annexation or different pilot scenarios. For example, the current agreement gives one hundred percent abatement to improvements for the first four years of their use. That means by the time that they are taxed, the value will be much less than initially was. How much money are we leaving on the table here? Residents deserve to know. During the negotiation process, the city should have provided transparent and extensive communication and consultation with community stakeholders. It should have included information on the size of the abatements and how they would affect the city's budget. Since that didn't happen, I request that you hold off on signing this agreement until city staff can provide a detailed estimate of how each scenario would affect the city's budget. Also, the term length should be reduced to the minimum amount of years. That way, a new IDA with input from community stakeholders can be negotiated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Lamont Taylor.
Mayor, council, Lamont Taylor, 522 Hancock. I come this afternoon to ask you to vote no or table the IDA agreements. Points that were made by Mr. Weber, Mr. Hale, and Mr. Minster, I echo, but I'm going to go from another tactic, from an EJ issue. You have provided the opportunity for these individuals to pollute my neighborhood and the neighborhoods along Upper Road, Hillcrest, and Toloso and Donald Park. You have given, you have condoned and have provided them the opportunity to do what they want to inside of their plants without any environmental impact for me and my surrounding neighbors. The EJ issue that I take and will present again if you go forward with this, well, because you are condoning the health-wise, lady came in last week to tell you about the height and the benzene levels. You had doctors talking about pediatricians, about the human impact that is happening with the pollution that is happening in this city. And you guys are letting it happen because you guys want thirty-three percent more of money to help you along your way? But what about the impact that it has on people who are breathing and living in this community? Again, I'm surviving stage four. Just think about the kids that are coming up that are going to be impacted because you have no environmental impact on these individuals that are, and you're letting them kill people by putting benzene and whatever pollution inside the air. You're doing that. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. That concludes our in-person, in-person public comment. Ms. Fronter, do we have John Hendricks on the phone?
Mayor, Bill Durrell has signed up also. Did you want to take him at the end, or do you want to do it before the video?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't see that written in. Mr. Durrell.
Bill Durrell, 22 Hewitt. Hope everybody had a good Labor Day weekend. Looks like... Looks like everybody was at that Parker McComb show. The, I gave each one of y'all a letter, and it's referencing a news report by Michael Gibson on the event, and it quoted Daniel Maliz, the general manager of OVG 360, who manages the American Bank Center. The city type A funds are being used as an incentive to draw in more of these top showmen to the American Bank Center. Type A funds are not supposed to be used for one-night events. Those are supposed to be for economic development. And as you read the letter that I drafted to you guys, I would be very curious to ask about that night's events as far as the ticket revenues and expenses, parking revenues, the ticketing fees that OVG and Ticketmaster have collected. That was probably about $750,000 worth of income that they had that evening. To be talking about type A funds to be used for bringing entertainment to this town is not the lawful use of those funds. I'm glad to see that we're having the election for the type A board today, or the selection of it, because it's very important. I'll be asking and afford you a request, some of these specifics about the use of operational dollars for events at the American Bank Center. I hope that we can all look at the accountability and have transparency on how these funds are going to be used. We've owned Concrete Street for 25 years. We built it in 2000. It's a hard business. We supported when American Bank Center was initially built. And when AEG was here, I believe it was SMG was after them, then it was the next G, OVG. So we've been here. We've seen the process, and we've seen the fights, and we've seen how they manipulate the dollars. It's a public company managing a public venue against private industry. We're the only ones that pay ad valorem tax in the C District. We're struggling to try and make it work. And when you guys are talking, allowing type A dollars to go towards an event that does not add any hotel rooms on Labor Day weekend when we don't need any incentives for hotel rooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darrell. I think that concludes our in-person.
Okay, next, we do have three people signed up. I understand one is not online, so we would go with Gina Kissy if she's online.
Hello. I'm not sure if you can hear and see me.
Yeah, we can see you now. And have you listed as not a city resident, correct?
That's correct, yeah. I'm in New Orleans.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and set that timer for one minute, whenever you're ready to start.
All right. Hi, yeah, so I'm not a resident of Corpus Christi. I'm from New Orleans, but the majority of my family is from an area called Cancer Alley, which is an area in Louisiana where pollution is so great that cancer and similar diseases are exponentially more likely than the rest of the country. So with that in mind, I'm speaking against any additional or any new industrial district agreements. At the very least, you know, based on what the other comments have stated, I think that you should push this vote back until there's more information. Similar agreements are what led to the creation of Cancer Alley, regardless of economic growth and regardless of job opportunities. You know, a lot of the folks in Cancer Alley work in the industries that are giving them these illnesses, and they also have medical bills they can't afford. Cancer Alley will always be Cancer Alley because it's been there for years, and the pollution doesn't go away, regardless of, you know, in the grand scheme of things, short-term economic development. Regardless of whether it's in Louisiana or Corpus Christi, you know, economic growth.
Thank you, Ms. Kissy. Your time is up. Next, we have Maggie Peacock.
Hi, yes, one second. Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. To quote an op-ed by Isvala Reza from 2018, "For big businesses, especially the refining industries that move into the region, the people and natural resources of the coastal bend are a means to the end, and that end is profit." Reza continues, "Because they are so large and rich, they have the capacity to shape what we know, how we think, and what we demand of them. Too many people, including our elected officials, limit their expectations of these giants for fear of them choosing to go elsewhere. To summarize, Corpus Christi is a sacrifice zone. The refineries now outside city eliminates enjoy being in the coastal bend while polluting the community and not sharing the responsibility of paying for good services and resources the city provides. This corporate welfare starves coastal bend communities. IDAs are described as economic development incentives, but this simply is not true. The refineries aren't going anywhere, but it's time to annex industry. Vote no on the current agreement, or at least table it. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. Okay, Mayor, that would conclude our public comment period.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, so we are going to move on to item G, our board committee appointments.
All right. Mayor, Council, the first two boards for your consideration are the type A and B corporation boards, and the same members historically serve on both boards. Diana Summers and Jesus Jimenez are current members who are seeking reappointment, and their attendance records are in your packets.
I move to reappoint. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to reappoint. Please submit your vote. Who was the second one? Rebecca? Diane Summers and?
Jesus Jimenez.
Thank you.
Okay, so then next we have, that leaves us with three vacancies. So two of these vacancies are for full two-year terms, and they end on September 30th of 2024. One vacancy fills a partial unexpired term, and that ends September 30th of '25. So let's go ahead and take the, the appointments for the full two-year terms first, and those are ending on September 30th of '24.
The full term, okay. I'd like to nominate Dr. Vishny, ready for the partial term.
Okay, can we start with the other two first, though, Mayor?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely. So we'll go ahead and open nominations?
Yes, ma'am.
Nominate Victoria Holland.
Okay, Victoria Holland.
And nominate John Valls.
I want to nominate Al Garcia.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close nominations, and we will be voting on two, correct?
That's right, Mayor.
Two point, yeah, two, two individuals each. So I'll go ahead and start on my left with Councilman Suckley.
Philippello and Holland.
Mr. Klein.
Philippello and Garcia.
Philippello and Holland.
Philippello and Valls.
Philippello and Valls.
You know, you already have five votes. Philippello and Holland. Should have skipped you.
Philippello, Philippello and Holland.
So we've got five votes. I'll do Holland and Hernandez.
That's what I should have done.
Hernandez. Okay, so that would be Holland and Philippello, pointed to those two. And that leaves us with the one remaining slot for the partial term.
Right, and I nominated Dr.
Ready.
Uh, Dr. Ready, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll read again. Hernandez.
Okay, any others?
I'll nominate Goldston.
Nominations, and we'll start with Ms. Campus.
Can we show the screen, please? The, the tally sheet? Thank you.
Dr. Ready. Ready.
Dr. Ready?
Okay, yeah.
Dr. Ready.
Dr. Ready. Dr. Ready. Dr. Ready.
Dr. Ready is appointed. Okay. So that takes us to the Downtown Management District. That's our last board today. There are eight vacancies, and they represent the following categories: three AETs, agents, two property owners, and one stock owner, and two new positions. So per the local government code, succeeding directors are chosen through the recommendation of the board and the approval of the city council. So the DMD does recommend postponing one of these vacancies, the one filling Kristoff, I'm starting to have a pronunciations, and Kusiewicz's position. So then we'll actually be filling seven vacancies today because of that. So let's start with the reappointments. The DMD recommends the reappointments of Leslie Lomax, Ben Molina, Raymond Janak, and Cheryl Watzmeyer Rios.
Move to reappoint. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please submit your vote for reappointment.
Bless you. I'm sorry, it's taking a minute.
I want to ask that.
Yes.
Rebecca, Ben Molina is actually a candidate for council, city council for two. Is this separate from the city where we don't?
Yes, sir, it is. We did request a legal opinion on that, and he would become ineligible once he was, if he was elected, but right now, not upon filing. Yeah, it's not considered a city board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so. I think it should show the votes up there. Okay?
It does.
Mr. Barata?
Okay, the motion carries.
So then we do have the, the new appointments, and the DMD recommends the new appointments of Avery Rennie, Zachary Bornstein, and Chris Navarro.
Motion to appoint the recommendations. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please submit your votes.
I'm sorry. You said Avery. It's missing his name.
Oh, is it? I don't know. Did I miss that?
Or maybe I, maybe I read it wrong.
No, sir. It does say Rennie.
It's what now?
It does say Rennie. R-E-N-Y, Avery, R-E-N-Y. Okay. They were Avery Rennie, Zachary Bornstein, and Chris Navarro. No, ma'am.
These are the recommendations.
What was the last one?
He's not even.
Navarro.
No, the last one was Chris something.
Navarro. Okay, please submit your vote.
It should be on your screen. I hope so. Does it, I don't know if it's shining.
It is.
Rennie, Bornstein, and Navarro.
Yeah, it is confusing because it's the next phase, yeah.
Okay, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Rebecca. So moving on to item H, our budget-related items, six through 17. We'll start with number six. This is a public hearing and first reading ordinance adopting the Corpus Christi operating budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Eddie Houlihan with the Office of Management and Budget. As you mentioned, item number four is the public hearing and first reading of the annual operating budget. I have a brief review of what we've went over the last five weeks. First, the budget does address city council and community priorities. Most importantly, it provides property tax relief for families and seniors in our community, and also eliminates fees, namely the street maintenance fee, which sunsetted in December of '23. The main areas of focus for the budget was our public safety, police and fire, and our streets. The police count remains the sworn count at 501 sworn officers. The budget does include an academy funded for, in July of 2025, and also includes the replacement of 75 Mark vehicles. The firefighter count, sworn firefighter count is 455. Also includes a fire academy, which is funded in, for, to begin in January of 2025, and includes the replacement of two fire pumpers and three medic units. In the street area, the, the budget includes 129.4 million investment in our streets and does not, no disruption in the rapid pavement program business model and progress. Twenty-five budget totals nine, little over 990 million on the operating side and 867 million on the capital side for a total of 1.8 billion. The positions in the 25 budget, originally there were 78 reductions in the full-time position reductions in the proposed budget. After some proposed amendments, that reduction is now 60. 60 positions reduced in the budget. So the net full-time position decrease would be 23. And over on the right-hand side, you can see at the top there, the public safety positions remains at 501 for the police department, and for the fire department, 455 sworn positions. And down there on the bottom right is the part-time civilian positions, which there was an increase of 84 seasonal positions in the after our kid power program, the after-school program, as a result of adding four, four new sites and increased enrollments at some of the existing sites. The rates for residential customers, no tax adjustment is assumed in the proposed budget. The proposed budget will remain the property tax, 59.9 cents per $100 valuation. It also includes property tax relief with the doubling of the home set exemption from 10 to 20%. And also an increase in the over 65 disabled exemption from $50,000 to $62,500. There is a proposed rate adjustment in the water, wastewater and stormwater utilities. There is no proposed rate adjustment in the gas or the solid waste. And the street maintenance fee, as I mentioned earlier, was sunsetted in December of 2023. Specifically for residential customers, for the 6,000 gallon usage water customer would see a decrease of $1.77 monthly. In the wastewater side, based on a 5,000 gallon winter quarter average customer would see a $4.68 increase. A stormwater customer would see a $1.48 per month increase. No increase in the gas or the solid waste rate. So the monthly increase for a typical residential customer would be $4.39 or 2.94%.
And Eddie, before you go over this slide here, this was requested by Councilman Suckley. So what Eddie's going to go over is we are recommending seven point, excuse me, 77.7 million, almost 78 million in use of one-time fund balances to balance the budget. We wanted to show what, what of those expenditures, what are recurring and what's one-time. You're going to see most of them are one-time, and that's good budget principles. We don't want to have recurring expenditures funded with one-time revenues. So Eddie will go through this. We're going to go through each. We're going to go through each fund to show of the fund balance we're using, is it recurring or is it one-time?
Okay.
Yes, sir?
The first fund is the general fund, our largest fund. So that, we are using, the proposed budget does propose to use a little over $9 million of fund balance. The majority of that is a street transfer to make up for the, for the revenue that we had lost from the maintenance fees, so that, most of that is that particular area. There is also some fire equipment, and there is also industrial district refund for the, for the value decrease on some of the industrial district properties. In the water fund, proposed use of almost $6 million in fund balance. The majority of that is $8 million to cash fund CIP projects. There's also almost $2 million that would go for the developer trust agreements. In the wastewater fund, almost $15 million usage of fund balance. As in the water fund, $8 million of that is for CIP cash funding. We also, from the wastewater fund, transferred to the water fund for some stormwater legacy debt, which occurred prior to 2021, of about 12 million. And then we also are using, actually using $7.4 million in there for developer trust funds, the same is in water. In the stormwater fund, using about $1 million of fund balance in fiscal year '26. If nothing changes there, we'd have to cut back a little bit on the capital outlay of, the capital outlay of 3.2 million in that fund. The gas fund, $1.2 million of usage of fund balance. That's mostly for capital outlay, about $1.8 million in that fund for capital outlay. The hotel occupancy tax fund, fund balance usage of about 4.7. There are CIP cash funding there of 9.2 million. So all other things being equal in '26, we'd have to reduce our capital outlay funding from that particular fund. Now, the shot fund, the state hotel occupancy tax, a usage of about 3.1, about half of that, about 1.6 million is for CIP cash funding. The other half, this is an area where we know we're going to have to make some reductions in recurring expenses in the shot fund for fiscal year '26. The two street funds, street maintenance and residential street, a usage of 11.2 and 9.7 million, that is for, that's for cash funding of projects, which in fiscal year '26, unless we were able to come up with another funding for, would have to be reduced. And then the three health benefit funds, the fire, police, and city care, we did use those fund balances in the fire area for capital outlay, and also for a one-time health savings account adjustment to be effective January 1. And the same, in the police health fund, use that fund balance for some capital outlays for some vehicles, and also for HSA contribution. And then lastly, the city care health benefit fund, about 5.5 usage of fund balance, and we also had a one-time health savings account adjustment in that fund.
Okay, Councilman Passley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Eddie, thank you. I want to go back to page six, Eddie, for just a moment, and, you know, if you, if you look at the net-net on our residential fees here, our fees that are going to go to residential and commercial customers, the net effect is an additional $4.39 added on. We eliminated the street user fee, which is $5 and some change, and now we're going to add another four back, so it's like we can't get a break. And I want to talk specifically about stormwater. If our type A, our new type B sales tax passes, we put a number of, our great deal of money is going to be utilized from that for stormwater projects. And there's some of the things here that I know we're going to have to do, and I want to clarify one thing with respect to the trust funds. So whether or not we go with a reestablishment or reuse of the existing trust fund with some modification ties done, or whether we go with the...
The impact fee?
The impact fees, yeah. Excuse me. We're going to have to, we're going to have to balance that trust fund account either way.
Right. Yeah, with a recommendation in this budget.
There were people up here that were saying it because we were going with, looking at the old trust fund account, that was the only reason we were going to balance.
No, yeah, we have to balance it either way.
Regardless of which plan we go.
Exactly, you're right, Councilman.
Okay. We're going to have to do the IDA refund.
Right, we can't, we have to do that.
The one-time HSA contribution is some, but, so my question is, Peter, why wouldn't we take this, our part of this $77 million, and just say, we're going to use that to reduce the amount of taxes and fees that people are going to have to pay here in the city this coming year?
Sorry, that's what we've done. So under the, take the streets as an example, the street, streets, whether it's residential or street maintenance, that's, that's paid for with property tax and sales tax. So by, by giving a break to homeowners on the tax bill, we're backfilling some of that general fund money with this one-time monies to be able to afford that property.
We can't really say we're giving a break to taxpayers when we're increasing their fees. And I've said for years in this city that we brag about reducing the tax rate, and we brag about, you know, how we've cut this and cut that, and I'm very proud that we were able to double the amount that people are going to receive back for their homestead exemptions. That's something that we fought very hard for. But we still have to look at, at the end of the day, people are going to pay more.
Right, so if somebody's value went up on their home, they would pay more, but this tax rate, property tax rate is the same in this budget, and if somebody has a homestead exemption, it's going to double. So if their value didn't go up, they will, they will see a reduction in their property tax bill. And we know that the appraisal district controls the value, not the city, and if one's value did go up, that's, that's equity to them, so, so we don't control the value, but assuming no value increase is a reduction in their property tax payment to the city.
I agree with that, and I understand that. But when we say that, and then on the other hand, we increase their fees.
Right, so there's three fees on there, so if you go back to that slide, Eddie, the fees line. So under the water, wastewater, these are standalone entities, and property tax, sales tax, and other fund balances shouldn't support the function here. So water and wastewater is based on the cost to run those two enterprises or businesses. And Drew and his team are here, but this last budget, we, the council forewent or did not have a rate increase, and so I think it's been several years since the last time we had a rate increase. And each week at city council, we show you the cost for chemicals and equipment and supplies, and all of that's out of our hands, but they continue to go up, you know, from vendors that sell us the material. And then the stormwater fee increases a five, consistent with a five-year plan that city council approved or kind of conceptually approved. We're in year three of the plan now in 2025, and these funds aren't for capital investment, like you mentioned, Councilman, so the, the sales tax will invest money in infrastructure. But this fund is, and these funds are used for operating, primarily in this budget, it would be for street sweeping, vegetation mowing, and minor barge ditch cleaning. So just the annual maintenance of cleaning ditches, sweeping streets. Councilman Hernandez knows that we moved a lot of the debt from what would have been in here to the bond program for capital infrastructure, and we're trying to make this fund more, the stormwater fund, more just an operating fund with little debt or a little capital investment. So the dollar 48 is to continue that, continue that plan to eventually sweep every neighborhood street once a month, and sweep our arterial and collectors, let's see here, 12 times, excuse me, all the residential street would be four times a year, and then the collectors and arterials would be once a month.
Well, I understand all that, but it's still a fee increase.
We, no doubt, we agree. And again, the water, wastewater, the net increase to the average homeowner's dollar is in 91 cents.
It just seems to me like, since we're going to be utilizing a great deal of our sales tax money for stormwater projects, how we, we can't make that blend together to cut some of these fee increases.
Yeah. Again, this fund is, those stormwater, those flood control improvements are needed, right, to mitigate flooding, but the upkeep of the system, the sweeping, the vegetation clearing, the mowing, the managing of the underground system, all that's done in this operating account, this fund, that had a five-year plan to it. We have a slide that was shown in the presentation, but, so the kind of mutual, while they're the same work with us, and the, and the, and the method of storing gas and then selling it to the companies. The long-term pro forma, you may remember, is a net positive to, to the, to the gas payer in the city. We'll, we'll end up making, we'll end up making our money back when we sell gas prices when they're not good on the market.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, right.
Okay, well, we'll see what everybody else has to say. Thank you very much.
Councilman Hunter?
Thank you. Okay, so we're saying we're having a negative one, or a 1.77 decrease for water, but if we go to our water rates, proposed water rates, we show something different, specifically the outside city limit getting a reduction versus the inside city limits going up.
Yes, there's numerous rate structures, Councilman, so what we showed you is inside city limit for the average residential customer who uses 6,000 gallons. So for outside the city limits, their bill goes up, and, and other classifications change as well.
So what's the percentage of citizens that use 2,000 to 6,000 gallons? Because I live by myself, and I go over 3,000, apparently a lot more than I thought, according to the water department.
Yeah, Drew, have Drew, Drew is going to come up to the microphone and help answer that, but the majority of our, close to 90...
Fifty percent?
About 50 percent.
I thought it was a little under 50, but that sounds about right. So why are we giving outside the city limit users of our water a decrease, and why are we increasing the inside the city limit water users?
Well, the outside, we're trying to get equal with the inside.
Yeah, have Drew, Drew.
Well, there's a $3 difference.
I'm going to have Andy McCartney, so Drew Miley, Chief Operating Officer, I'm going to have Andy McCartney kind of talk through that a little bit, because Andy has quite a bit of information in terms of how he's come up with the rate design and the, and the information behind it.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where you're referring to the outside getting a, you know, a smaller decrease.
Page four of the water rates presentation. It's item number seven, I think, or eight? We've, you've only been showing us this for the last two months.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know, I don't...
$18.49 to $15.83. $18.49 to $15.83.
That's because on, this year, last year, we set the outside volumetric rate equal to inside, and so this year, we're setting the monthly minimum charges equal as well, and they weren't last year.
So now we're lowering what our increase was last year, when y'all said we, y'all came up here, your group came up here and said that we were subsidizing some of these OCLs, specifically the IDAs.
Yes.
So now we're lowering that, and we were wrong before.
No, we were not wrong. What happened was the rates that got adopted were not what we had recommended. So there was a change, I don't think the rates were really changed, except for the volumetric rates for outside were set equal to inside on the volumetric rate.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
The smaller rate, monthly minimum charge for that 5/8-inch meter was actually lowered by 90 cents to offset an increase in the raw water, so that the smaller residential customer wasn't going to see an increase.
Okay, so then answer me this, if you have an OCL versus an ICL customer, your ICL is obviously closer to most of our city facilities that deliver or distribute the water. If it takes us more pipe, more infrastructure, more everything to deliver to an OCL, why are they paying less?
Yeah, and that's why we were, we came in and we were trying to rectify that by setting the volumetric rates equal. So this year, we're trying to set also the monthly minimum charges equal to the inside.
So if we do a 20-mile pipe out to the middle of nowhere, they're going to be paying less for that water?
No.
They're paying the same rate.
It would be the same.
It's paying the same rate.
It's paying the same now.
You're talking about for the residential raw water rate, yeah?
Yes.
I'm talking about for everything else.
For, besides...
Commercial?
Commercial, yeah.
Residential? Anything over 6,000 gallons?
Commercial, large volume, they would be paying the same rate as the inside, commercial and large volume customers.
Up until 6,000 gallons?
Well, for large volumes, I mean, they basically have to take more than 10 million gallons in a month to qualify for that rate, so...
And there's a lot of them.
For residential, for residential, they would be paying the same rate under what we're recommending for this year, for 2025.
Not according to your rate sheet.
Can we put what?
Yeah.
We're discussing this on our operating budget, but this is based off of item number seven or eight on the agenda. Let me pull it up.
Right, we're taking this a little out of order, but...
Still on the agenda.
Yeah, I know.
Number 11.
The main item was the budget.
Number 11.
Well, that's the water rate.
That's what we're discussing on the budget item. It's what we're voting on right now.
Right now, Eddie's first presentation was just on the overall, we're just showing the overall general fund and operating budgets. So there's an item on the agenda for the water rate, wastewater rates, not all rates.
So for, and you're talking about the residential customers.
I'm talking about all the customers.
Okay, well, for the volumetric rates, those rates should be the same whether they're inside or outside city customers. The only difference is on the wastewater side, where the monthly minimums are lower for the outside, because none of that stormwater legacy debt is built into the rate, because the outside city customers do not benefit from the stormwater system, only the inside city customers. And so that's the only place, the only rate element where the outside are going to pay a little bit less than any inside customers, and that's on the wastewater side.
So we're not paying less in water rates?
No, for the proposed rates for '25, they will be paying the same except for the wastewater. Now, the outside, their monthly minimum charges are going down, that's because they were arbitrarily set higher in the past, and last year, those did not get changed. It was at the 18.49, and now we're setting those equal, which just happens to reduce the outside, because they were arbitrarily set at like 1.25 times or 1.5 times greater, and which was last year, we were trying to get, you know, take baby steps and phase this in, so that the outside were paying equal on the water side what the inside were paying, and it still led to a dispute at the PUC with our large volume customers. And so that's the goal, because typically where we have seen these outside city customers, they're very close to the inside city customers, and so there is no real cost difference to serve those customers. On the wastewater side, there are very few wastewater outside the city limit customers, and so that's why in our recommendation, and based on what things we were seeing at the Public Utility Commission, is to reduce that differential on the wastewater side. Your outside city limit customers were paying about twice what the inside city customers were paying for wastewater service.
So if we go back to our slide, this is for our city staff, if we go back to the slide where it says 6,000 gallons, why didn't we just include everybody in there? Why are we trying to sell so hard that we're having a minimal increase to our rates?
So I think probably the best way to answer that, Councilman, is, you know, we have, as we all know, we have different customer classes, and so trying to break that down by customer class was an important thing to do. I also recognize that in, in, when we're trying to show these rates, it's important to try to put it into context for, certainly for, you know, like you just described, a residential user who uses about 6,000 gallons. That's a, that's a typical and average user in the city.
Rebecca, I need a timer. I'm pretty close to going over, I would assume. So the other residential and commercial users are not contributing to our operating budget?
No, not at all. They are absolutely an important part of the component. I just think that, you know, when we're trying to do this, and we've showed it, we've broken it down in a number of different ways so that hopefully it's clear, but at the end of the day, you know, I think what you're talking about is essentially, you know, we're looking at a general picture of a 6,000 gallon user. And so when you look at it in that context, there's a wastewater, there's an increase for a typical user in that category. There's a little bit of a decrease on the water side, the net overall is an increase.
It's a decrease to people who don't use much water. It's an increase to everybody else. It's what your water rates say.
Well, for the residential customer class, so we're doing rates by customer class now in order to come back to the cost of service.
I just find this.
The only customer service that's a little, that is still a little bit above their cost of service is the commercial, and we've reduced their residential, their commercial volumetric rate to equal the large volume. And so they're still about 2.5 million. So next year, we're going to take care of that along with some other things.
Okay.
Try to get this all equalized, Councilman Hunter.
Thank you.
Just takes some time to do it.
In the meantime, we've made it as complicated as we can.
It's, unfortunately, when you have rates by customer class, it does become a little bit more complicated, but I think we'll see in our PUC case, by doing it this way, the PUC staff, you know, they kind of endorse what we're doing, as seen by the Leander case, where their outside customers appealed their rates because they were being charged 10% more than the inside. And I believe Leander, the ALJ Administrative law judge hasn't issued their opinion, but they've ruled in favor of the city of Leander, that they can charge 10% more to the outside.
I think we need elected public water officials.
Are you done? Yeah. Councilman Barretta.
Yeah, just real quick, I just, with regard to the wastewater fee, is some of that as a result of the consent decree?
Absolutely. I mean, there is upward pressure on our rates as a result of the federally mandated consent decree. So there is a lot of work that we're doing to comply with that. Of course, you know, as part of the wastewater rate increase is to cover the costs associated, not just with the upward pressures of the consent decree, but also the, you know, some of those rates are going to be utilized to cover the costs of the stormwater legacy debt.
Yeah, yeah. So, but that's, and then the consent decree, remind me, 180 million, 100?
That is, as I understand it, it's about a $700 million federally mandated increase to the work that we do over the next 15 years.
Okay, 700 million.
Correct.
All right, well, I was way off. All right, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Councilman Hernandez.
Drew, you might want to get your rate modeler back up.
Can we discuss that at 11? I mean, we're going to talk about water rates.
Well, this is regards to the, how this reflects on our budget, because I'm a little surprised that we didn't have an increase in our water rates with regards to the overall budget. In, you know, and I took the time to really kind of drill down into understanding how we do rates through customer class and understanding how you assign a portion of the infrastructure and the costs associated by customer class. So I kind of understand a little bit more. It's not how I would have done it, how I think about it, but I get it. Everybody has their own, every group has their own way of looking at things, and this is what's been done in this industry for many, many years. I'm with you there. Okay, so in just looking at what our revenue requirements are projected out in the future, during our discussion, in five years, we will need revenues in the Water Department of $300 million. We currently have revenues or projected revenues for this year of $169 million. So without having significant increases, you'll never get to that revenue of $300 million in five years. And just to give you perspective, right, five years ago in 2020, our revenues were budgeted for $143 million, or $169 million. So it's less than 30 million in the last five years, and we have rate increases that we kind of complain about. But over the next five years, you need to increase that by $130 million. So kind of explain to me what the thought process is for not only this year, but also the future years.
Yeah, and for this year, I mean, overall, there is an increase in the water utility as far as rates go. It is to generate additional revenues, not only to me, operating costs, but debt service, debt service coverage and capital requirements. And so right now, you know, as far as the D-SAL debt that exists right now, we're able to use that drought surcharge exemption fund, monies that are collected, and to offset approximately $6 million in D-SAL debt service for 2025. And so that's a positive thing, but in 2028, I believe it can only be partially offset just because of using up a lot of that fund balance. And so you don't want to drive it down to zero. You always want to have the next year's amount, you know, of the drought surcharge exemption fund, fund balance to use for the budget. And so that starts to happen in 2028. So we're cognizant that that's happening, and we're showing significant rate increases. I believe it's in one of our slides during the budget workshop back on August 1st, where we're showing, you know, more than 10% increases needed. But right now, it wouldn't be prudent just to raise rates in anticipation of that. We wanted to raise rates to bring back the overall cost of service and to get the customer classes as close to their cost of service as possible because we had such imbalances when I was here last year, and that we, the utilities made great progress in what we're recommending for this year on eliminating that. Only the commercial class is right now is generating revenues in excess of their cost of service. And so that's part of the plan. We do have a 10-year plan. We've got a 10-year model that you've seen. Sorry, I wasn't able to be on the call with you last Thursday. As you can tell on my voice, I was under the weather. In fact, I was told to, at 1:30, to go to bed. And I lost my voice later, so I did. So sorry, I wasn't able to be on there. But our rate model does project out, and that was one of the utilities' requirements in their RFP that we responded to back in 2022, was to develop a rate model that has that 10-year projection period so that in anticipation of the infrastructure program and the capital funding that needed to be done, that you can see that rate path forward. And yes, there are going to be increases unless certain things happen, if there's any grant funding out there for the D-SAL project, things of that nature, that can help improve those projected increases in the rates.
Okay, one of the biggest issues I had here, and it goes to the overall budget, was the increase in our debts of service or the amount of debt that we have, right? I mentioned this at the workshop, that we have, currently have $513 million in debt in the Water Department, of which 33% of our operating budget goes to debt service, a total of about $57 million. You know, what, this is, you know, and the more we go on, the more revenue is required, not only to cover the debt service, a large amount of debt service. I mean, it's a full third of our overall debt for the city is in the Water Department. And, you know, as we go forward and to the point that Councilman Barretta was mentioning about the wastewater, that consent agreement was, I believe, $750 million over the, over a 15-year period, which, you know, on top of other things that we're doing as well, there's a significant concern about debt in that one. Now, the reason I say that is you can't not pay your debt. So you have two choices. You either raise rates, like we're doing for wastewater now, or you reduce your operating expense. But then that'll give you back into the problem you had to begin with, with not doing the maintenance, with not doing the, so, you know, we have to be cognizant of how we go forward, and that'll be a discussion during our CIP budget. Thank you.
Yeah. And if you've noticed in the news, a couple of weeks ago, the city of Clyde, which is just east of Abilene, defaulted on their debt service payments for their water system. And so now, you know, it's brought on a myriad of problems for them for not meeting that debt service. So yes, sir, it is a serious issue.
Thank you.
Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank, there's so much to take in here, but I'll start out with page six, or page seven, I guess. When Councilman Pusley was mentioning about the IDA refund and just the money overall that we're having to, have to pull from our fund balance. Can you tell me, do you know what we needed to, how much we needed to refund on the?
IDA?
How much was that? Was that like 2 million?
For fiscal year 20, the fiscal year we're in now was about 5 million. And then for the, for fiscal years 20 through 23, it was like 9, 8?
Yeah. Okay, so it was about 5 million that we had to refund, you know, the people challenging or the corporations challenging their appraisals, correct?
Correct.
So even with the IDA agreements, they still have every right to challenge their appraisals, and we still have to be able to come up with that money and refund them, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't think we can deny them that. I think it's a state law that they have the right to challenge their values. I don't think.
Yeah, that's correct.
I know. I actually tried to do that in the agreement. I tried to insert that language, and they were like, no, it can't be done, that if we have an agreement with them, you know, can we at least demand that they don't challenge their appraisals? But I was told no. So, okay, fine. But I also am glad that Councilman Hunter brought up, because all this, it's all interrelated, you know, we're, there's a lot of agenda items here that we're discussing, because eventually, we're also going to be discussing the drought exemption fee, which, you know, your gentleman touched on that, on that. We, in order for, it seems like in order for us to function in the Water Department, we're really basing this on, on having more heavy industry having to be lured here in order for us to operate this, the system that we have. This is the way I'm looking at it, because you just said, Councilman, on this, that a third of our debt is to pay the water? A third of our budget is set to pay for our water, yet our water debt. Okay, so we are still looking at this desalination without a permit. I mean, we still don't have the final draft permit. We still have other companies that have already filed for bankruptcy. As a matter of fact, you know, CC Polymers has already filed for bankruptcy. And I'm just looking at this balance and thinking, everything is very interconnected. Again, I am, I really am concerned about where we're getting the money and why, that's why I keep advocating, I keep, and I, some of the citizens that were able to make it because of work schedules, they weren't able to come in person and appeal or give their comments about the IDAs. But I feel this is where we're leaving our money. You know, I've asked staff to provide us how much money we're actually leaving on the table from our corporations. And Eddie, you can't answer that? Heather can't, isn't able to answer that? Why is that?
We didn't develop it, Councilwoman. That's the, we didn't develop it. We began to develop it, but when the partners on the IDA side were willing to do 12% higher, we, in working with the city council, we thought that was a better choice, so.
But Peter, the citizens, the community need to know. They need to know what we're voting on today.
Right.
And how much money is being left on the table. And we have, you know, we have an obligation to do that.
Yeah, or lost, or lost, the initial indications were it would cost us more. The fire chief was recommending several new fire stations, and the building's, this easy part, is staffing it with 12-plus firefighters or paramedics.
Okay, but we would not know that unless it's actually presented. Like, we would need to know the actual cost. You saying that is one thing, but for staff to actually provide and do the actual homework on that is what is needed. So that's all I really wanted to say, just to let the public know that what we're doing right now and this money that we're budgeting, it all is connected. We, if we don't get the money from the residents, we need to be getting them from industry, and we're not doing that right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, that's all the questions and comments. Comments we have, I'm going to go ahead and open.
I'm sorry, do you have any more slides?
We've got a couple more slides.
Just a few more slides in this first item, Mayor, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
He's almost done. Yes.
Okay, we want to go over the amendments.
Yeah, I know. Blunters lowering, go ahead.
So this is a proposed amendment, and they are the same as you saw during the workshop. Some of the net revenue adjustment of 29, a little, almost 30,000, and then some, some of the, some of the proposed reductions that we, through council input and also community input, we're proposing to add back the five co-compliance officers, also restoring 300 of the 600,000 that was in the co-compliance budget for mowing and demolition, restoring some of the hours at the Garcia Library and in line with the library director's new hour plan, also restoring three months of operations at the Ozawa Learning Center. There are negotiations ongoing and confident that we will have a partner in that particular area, restoring the Greenwood Senior Center operations, adding, restoring the two animal care kennel technicians, the community texting messaging project through, to provide better communications to the, for our city, also the funding for the North Kuanis, Beach, North Beach, Kuanis baseball field. North Beach community chimed in on that, that they, they wanted that. And also, lastly, adding funding for one grant rider position. The next slide is how we would pay for some of those add backs, restorations, decreasing the street, transfer to the street fund from the general fund, however, not reducing the amount of funding the street has. We'd be taking that 700,000 from the street fund balance, taking some additional projected salary savings of almost 628,000, a little over 628, and also eliminating funding for an assistant city manager and assistant city manager executive assistant, decreasing overtime across several departments, decreasing cash management temporary services that they had not been using, and lastly, eliminating two positions as part of the alternative library hours plan. That was all the general fund, and then the couple of items, the other side of the street maintenance is decreasing the revenue that would come from the general fund and using the street fund balance for the 700,000, and a small amount in the local emergency planning committee to bring in sand pat to pay, and then also the increase in the reverse alert fees for that. So that would be a wash there for the $8,600. And this is just a summary of what we've so far, leading up to the first reading, we've had five council, city council budget workshop each Thursday in August, seven community input sessions across the city. Today is the public hearing for the budget and the tax rate, and today also is the first reading of the operating and capital budget. The second reading scheduled for September the 10th. And that is the end of this presentation. I'll stand by for any additional questions.
Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. On the restoration of 40 of the 55 hours for the Garcia Library, and that's one of the largest expenditures on this. the largest expenditures on this budget amendments list. So I get, and I asked this question last meeting, so that means we're going to operate the Garcia Library 40 hours a week?
Let me check, Councilman. I have the schedule there from the presentation.
I thought, I thought that's what you asked.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Is that what it was, Eddie?
Yeah.
Trying to get the 40 hours a week.
Here's our chief librarian.
Here it is. Let's see.
Maybe she-
The Garcia would be 50, would be 40 hours a week.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be every day.
Do we have a demand on that library to support 40 hours a week?
We'll have Laura answer that. Go ahead, Laura.
Laura Garcia, Library Director. Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. How have you determined that?
Usage, popularity, the number of programs we have there.
You say usage?
Individuals checking out material.
Let me finish my question. Have you taken a head count on how many people are coming in and out of there on a daily?
Yes, sir. We have circulation numbers.
Okay.
I mean checkout, I mean visitor counts.
Okay. And are, are these people just coming in to hang out, or are they actually using the library?
They're using the library. A lot of these come during story time. The parents bring their children. We have a variety of programs that parents come with their children to the library. It has nothing to do with the students, the school, or anything. It's just the regular general.
The school using this library at all, then?
No, rarely.
All right. And, and Peter, tell me about the funding for the North Beach Kuanis baseball field. What is that in reference to?
Excuse me. So that baseball field needs some improvement. We recently demolished, abandoned, dilapidated building that was there, and the, so the greens themselves, the fencing, some of the mounds need to be, you know, improved or restored. So North Beach has talked to us about that over the months to include at the public comment period that we have with them.
Okay.
It's just a one-time kind of a restoration effort for the-
Is this a city park?
It's, that's a city park. It's leased to the Kuanis group that uses it. But those, the ball fields, and then there's a big piece of property where there was an abandoned building.
Do the Kuanis provide any funding to support that?
Where's Robert Dunn? Do they provide any funding, Robert? No, no funding from Kuanis.
Okay. Well, okay. I just want to read something I said last week, and this includes me, because I fought really hard to restore our compliance officers to the-
Right.
-code enforcement department. But, you know, every time we talk about making cuts, everybody identifies their golden calf.
Right.
And nobody wants their golden calf to be taken away.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So we did, just to repeat it here, we did restore all the co-compliance officers and the, yeah, and the two at the animal care, the two kennel techs, we restored those as well. Yes, sir.
Councilman-
Laura, thank you for your question.
Councilman Clyde.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is for Eddie, maybe for, for Peter. Regarding the budget, I got a question about this last week. I just got one, some clarification on it. Has to do with economic development, an increase in spending for economic development, pretty substantial increase. The numbers that were thrown at me were, I think, 462% increase in economic development. I just wanted to understand a bit more about why we're increasing that so much. I think there was some talk about increasing positions in that, in that area. I just wanted to get some clarification on that, make sure I got my information right.
Yeah. Heather's gonna come out, but the budget, last year or over this year increased in the current year because of the, because of the parking division. We moved the parking division from the police department to economic development.
Okay.
But in the 25 budget, there's no substantial changes to that operation, looking at the-
So I'm not looking at the, so we have a difference between our operating budget, and then we have the overall economic development budget, which includes all of the TERSs, type A, type B. So within the operating budget, it has not changed. It's very, there's a couple of little changes, but for as far as personnel, economic development personnel, along with our economic development department includes the parking enforcement along with staffing to manage the contracts for the American Bank Center and all of the city facilities over there. So the operating budget hasn't changed. What that may be referring to, and unfortunately, I don't have the numbers in front of me, is the total budget for economic development, which includes all the spendings within TERS 2, TERS 3, TERS 4, type A and type B. So, and those fluctuate just depending on what the projects are that are coming forward, what the boards approve for spending, that kind of stuff. And so I'll look a little bit closer into that, to maybe that percentage is based off of what is also within those other economic development tools and funds. But within the operating budget, it has not increased significantly, hardly any at all, actually.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's a good clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Eddie, did you have anything else?
No.
You're good.
End of this presentation.
Okay. Peter, and I just, for clarity, so I have serious reservations about the additional financial impact that, you know, this presentation has, you know, shared with us. But I want to, again, be clear. This item, further in the, further down in the agenda, we have specific ordinances that would approve or not certain increases, some of which we're seeing here.
Right.
So in voting for this operating budget, this is appropriations of funding. It is not necessarily voting for some of the things we may have seen here.
Right. That's correct, Mayor. So there's 12 items on the agenda this morning. All, all 12 are related to the budget. And so the lineup includes, first is the budget appropriations ordinance. So this is the spending or the appropriations. Appropriation means council gives the authority for staff to spend. The number six is the appropriations of the general fund and all other funds. And then there's a, then there's the capital budget would be the next one. That's the, the plan for spending in the capital budget. Then there's the tax rate, which would be the property tax rate to support that. And then the remaining items are all the fees and, and other adjustments revenue-wise to make the budgets balance. So voting for number six has nothing to do with the rates. That'll be a separate item, and specifically, the water rate is, is number-
Number 11.
Number 11. And then number 12 is the-
Right.
Yeah. Let's see, water, yeah, so water and wastewater are number 11. So five items in.
Right.
So what we'll do as we go through this, if, if council doesn't approve the recommended rates, then we'll have to, in the same meeting, make some more cuts in those operating accounts to make the budget balance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah.
Because we're voting on a budget, but it's appropriations.
The appropriations budget is first.
And then the ordinance come after that, which is specific to what goes inside of the budget.
Right. The revenue ordinances are subsequent to the appropriations ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Eddie, thank you.
Mayor, I move for approval.
Okay. Let me go and open public hearing. We're gonna go ahead and open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on item number six, which is a public hearing on the operating budget for fiscal year 24, 25? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public hearing. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, please submit your vote.
Yes, we're waiting on the board's.
Okay. We still waiting on someone? So the motion carries. We are going to, and again, I'm gonna be clear about this again. What was just voted on, what was it, 63?
Yes.
Yes. With the operating appropriations for the operating budget. So moving on, in a few items, probably three, three items down, we will be voting on certain increases that would be part of this budget, and then we adjust it accordingly, depending on how those votes go. So with that said, we are gonna go ahead and break. It's 1:47. We're gonna break for lunch. The council, let's see, do we have a?
I don't think there's any executive session.
No, we don't have an executive. Thank you, Councilman Roy.
Yeah, no executive session, Mayor.
So we're gonna break. Yeah, we're gonna break for lunch, and then we will return and continue our, with our